Okay, item fifteen, please.
Uh, just give me a second, I'm scrolling through. Item number fifteen. Honorable members of the City Council, City of Danbury, Connecticut. Dear members of the City Council, as you are aware, the City of Danbury has been planning on a referendum, SNAP 2020, to fund much-needed infrastructure and education improvement projects throughout the city. At the February meeting of the City Council, the council decided to send a bond proposal to the voters for a vote at the April twenty-eighth Presidential Preference Primary. Unfortunately, the primary was postponed to June by Governor Lamont and again on April seventeenth to August eleventh in response to the COVID-19 crisis. As part of a series of executive orders, Governor Lamont has authorized cities and towns to forego special town meetings, in our case, the referendum, to avoid large groups of people and employees from interacting in close proximity so as not to infect more people with the virus. The governor has authorized the legislative body to serve as a special town meeting referendum and vote on the bond package. Corporation Council Attorney Yemen, Attorney Pinter, as well as our outside town council Attorney Glenn Santoro have all reviewed this process and agree this is reflective of the governor's executive order. The vote of the City Council will serve as the final vote on adoption or rejection of the SNAP 2020. Please feel free to contact Attorney Pinter if you have any questions. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Mark D. Bauton, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, um, with your pleasure, Council, Mr. Cobble.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a rather lengthy motion, so please just bear with me. I move to receive the communication ordinances and resolution following and in accordance with procedures and authority set forth an executive order of the governor numbered EO seven dash S dash seven to adopt the two ordinances entitled: An ordinance appropriating thirty-eight million seven hundred thousand dollars for various capital improvements to neighborhoods, paving, and parks within the city, and authorizing the issuance of thirty-eight million seven hundred thousand dollar bonds of the city to meet said appropriation and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. And an ordinance appropriating twenty-three million three hundred thousand dollars for various capital improvements to schools within the city and authorizing the issuance of twenty-three million three hundred thousand dollar bonds of the city to meet said appropriations and pending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purpose. Together with a finding that Section nine of said ordinances is specifically applicable and is reasonable and necessary for the protection of persons with and property within the city as therein set forth, together with compliance with publication, posting, public hearing, and notice requirements as having occurred in February twenty twenty, together with a resolution cancelite cancelling and waiving the original established authorizations to establish a bond referendum and date of April twenty eighth, twenty twenty, as set by the City Council on February fourth, twenty twenty, and to open this bond up for public comment for ten days.
Second. Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Tavo, seconded by Councilman Priola. We're gonna open it up now for comments and discussion. I will, uh, just, uh, gently remind the council that the discussion should be focused around the question at hand today. This is a situation where you'll be acting in the stead of the voter. Uh, so, uh, questions that hearken back or reach back to uh, the public hearings that we've had or the multiple, uh, uh, events that we've had, public information sessions. Those are all passed. The, the actual, uh, issuance made it through the council eighteen to one, uh, uh, on the last go-around. So this is a simple majority that's required. And, um, your comments again must be focused on the question tonight, not on rehashing the different components of the bond. That's already been done and outlined on by the council. Uh, and so with that, I'll throw it open to questions, discussions. I'll certainly give you some latitude. Mr. Rottel.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, we're really dealing with seven S now, uh, which is piggybacking or an addendum or an annex to, uh, seven I and seven B. One of the things that comes up in about the middle of seven S, uh, dash seven is this requirement, uh, that we make specific findings that such actions are necessary to permit the orderly operation of the municipality. And I, I think we've crossed that hurdle. But the other one's a little bit more ambiguous, um, in regards of our position here tonight, and that is the need to act immediately. And during the duration of the public health and civil preparedness emergency in order to avoid endangering the public health and welfare. So we get that part. But the need to act immedi- immediately, to some extent, precludes doing this next week or next month or something like that. Obviously, we can't really wait until August because we pass right by the state imposed deadline, which they have not seen, uh, fit to adjust for the, um, uh, for the coverage of the, uh, the school bond. But if you were perhaps less can can speak to the determination about the need to act immediately to satisfy seven S, now's probably a pretty good time to do it. So if somebody wants to jump in, uh, I'd appreciate that. Thank you, Your Honor.
Sure, I'll give it a fifty thousand foot level view and then I'll flip it over to less if, if, if that's okay.
Sure.
The immediacy of this is, is as follows. Um, you mentioned the deadline, June thirtieth. In order for us to put together a comprehensive package for, um, the state of Connecticut to review, we're gonna need, and particularly now, our deadlines, our workflow has been extended because people aren't at work, whether you're an offsite engineer or whether you're somebody that works here at City Hall. It takes more weeks to be able to pull all this data together that they're gonna want. Uh, both Antonio and I have met twice now, actually three times with the school facilities unit. They know this is coming, but you can't, you have to have everything set up in correct order to be able to, um, meet their hurdle, uh, for their reimbursement. So we need this time to be able to do that. If we waited till June, for example, at the June meeting, we're not gonna have enough time. We're not gonna make, uh, particularly with, with, um, the fact that all of our staff isn't coming into City Hall at this time. So in terms of the timeliness, that becomes an issue for us. Um, missing that April twenty eighth day was problematic for us. Um, and time in terms of the immediacy of the project, if we were not to hit the June thirtieth and wait till August or November, we lose an entire year of construction. And what we all have to remember is whether we like it or not, these children in particular are coming and they're coming in September. And we're gonna have to find a spot to make sure that they receive an appropriate education. So, um, every time we lose a week or two weeks, and we've already lost a week, it's a problem for us because we can't expend any money without the authority from the city to do that. So our experts, our engineers, our, uh, demographic people, all that stuff that requires an investment to get to that package to send to the state, you can't do it. Um, so on the school side, that's important. Obviously, the immediacy of the paving goes without saying. If we don't, uh, you know, do this now, uh, you won't get any paving done this summer, uh, with the exception of the million and a half that we have in the bonds, and that'll do about four roads. So big roads that we've been talking about for a long time. I'm looking at, I just happen to have Dwayne Perkins right in the middle here, and he's been on me about Long Ridge for two years. So we've got that programmed in, but I, I won't be able to get to that because I won't get the money probably till September, October. And at that point, you know, you're extinguishing your paving season. So each one of these pieces has an immediacy to it that is, is exacerbated by COVID-19. Uh, but that also, um, requires us to move rather quickly because the April twenty eighth day was extinguished. The June second date might have worked for us, but that's been extinguished as well. And so now we're pushed out to August eleventh, and I'm pretty, I can't be hundred percent sure, but I'm gonna guess you may not have that, uh, primary in August eleventh anyways, uh, for a variety of reasons. So from that side of it, the policy side, uh, it's optimal that we move forward now. Mr. Ari Drola, did you wanna speak to that a little bit?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I mean, you, you hit the key points. We've been in, uh, nonstop communications with the state, uh, regarding our needs. Uh, they have understood this growth that is somewhat unprecedented in the state of Connecticut. Um, they're getting their hands around it. And we all have a lot of work ahead of us to figure out what's the most effective way to deal with it. We know right off the get-go that we have to, uh, work with, uh, some temporary measures for the children that are coming in September, some additional measures for the children that are coming the following school year. And, uh, we're gonna work our way through this. Um, I am currently working with the Board of Education, uh, because in getting all of this deadline material in place, uh, we have to work hand in hand with the Board of Education in finalizing their educational spec. We have to absolutely ensure that the educational spec meets the academic program and the building can facilitate the academic program. So, um, I must have shouted a couple emails today, and I reviewed an actual draft of those documents, uh, this morning. So, um, all of this is a moving, continuously, um, uh, moving target to hit that deadline, which is the June thirtieth. So, um, as you mentioned, June thirtieth is missed, we missed one full construction season based on the way they, um, they formatted their grant applications. And, uh, that, hopefully that, that covers it. Thank you.
I just wanna, uh, add to that. I know Mr. Saint-Hilaire will, can speak to this, but the bond market now is uh, a good time to go out and to execute these notes. There is an immediacy to that as well as we get deeper into this crisis. Uh, we're not sure what's gonna happen with interest rates and how country reacts to it. Um, so if, with your indulgence, Mr. Rottel, you did ask a question. If you don't wanna hear, that's fine. I just wanted maybe get Mr. Saint-Hilaire to just opine for a second on the, uh, the bond markets and, and what, what the marketplace is like out there.
No, no, by all means, please.
Mr. Saint-Hilaire, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, it, really, it goes from week to week, uh, and what the mar- bond market is looking like. Uh, you know, on the referendum that you, uh, or not the referendum, the refunding bonds that you approved last month, uh, we're playing it, uh, you know, day by day. We're scheduled for next Tuesday to do the refunding. But honestly, uh, we may have to delay that, uh, once again. Uh, we're ready to pull the trigger, uh, after the last month's meeting, but we had to delay it, uh, simply because, uh, the timing wasn't right. Um, you know, every week it's, it, you know, we have to kind of watch the market. Uh, so that's, that's why having, uh, the authorization gives us the flexibility to, uh, gauge the market and, uh, and go out when we need to because you, you know, it, it takes a few weeks. Even when we have the authorization, we still have to schedule it. And we have to time, you know, put it out there and let everyone know we're gonna be doing this. Uh, so, you know, but we can't wait for another month, uh, to get it on the next council agenda and then, uh, have an ad hoc and do all these other kind of things and, you know, because then you're talking about two months and by that time, you might have, uh, missed an opportunity that could have reduced the, you know, the interest rates for the taxpayers. And tha- and that's a long-term cost to the taxpayers if we missed an opportunity. Uh, so these are the kind of things that are really important, especially at this time. Now, does that mean we're gonna go out, uh, with, with all of it right away? No, no. Those are discussions that we'll have, you know, with Antonio and on what the, the schedule's gonna look like for construction or what he's gonna need at first year. He's probably not gonna be doing a lot of construction initially. He might for the roads, certainly with the roads, but, um, y- you know, we'll, we'll work that out and then, uh, you know, we'll do some short-term notes and then convert those into long, you know, bonds. But, uh, you know, this gives us that kind of flexibility that we need to, to really keep the rates as low overall uh, for the taxpayers of Danbury.
Thank you, Director Saint-Hilaire. Thank you, Director Ayaterola, and thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll yield before.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Rottel. Further, uh, questions. Mr. Tabersek, is your hand up?
That's right.
Okay.
Yes, it is, honest to matter. The only thing I, um, personally, I think most of us feel that's very, very good program and so forth. That meets much of the needs of the city. The thing that bothers me though is that the fact is that voters have not really had, I don't think, enough time to make any comments on this. So I was just wondering, given the timeframe that, uh, you're talking about, would it be possible to extend the time for having amended or to extend the time for voter comments on this and then have a special meeting to have this vote that we're now considering? Because I just don't feel comfortable personally that we've given the voters enough of a chance to really make public comment and so forth. And as people who made the comments today, I, I don't know how many days they had, but certainly there wasn't that much for the general public to make, make much of a, uh, opinion shown.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Tabersek. So we, we are, the motion did include a ten-day period where we'll like be accepting comments and then certainly, um, if there's some stream or overwhelming thing that's uh, in there, uh, we'll, I'll appoint a committee here at the end to review them of the council and they'll be forwarded over and Taylor's gonna set up a uh, specific SNAP twenty twenty at Danbury kind of email, so it'll not go to the normal, uh, email address for other comments. So, uh, to try to get as much input as we can. But look, understand, this has been on the books since February, been ninety days. And, you know, uh, people were supposed to vote April twenty eighth. So they, if they've done their homework up until April twenty eighth, then they would have known that. We, you know, didn't move that date until the very last minute. And so I, I certainly understand and wanna take input. That's why we're gonna leave that period open. If there's something overwhelming that that subcommittee thinks should come back to the full council, they can do that. Um, but, uh, at the end of the day, um, we need to move these projects forward, and I'm more in favor of always letting the public vote. I think it pass, would pass easily. But unfortunately, given, uh, you know, what we're facing these days, I don't think that's gonna be practical. So, um, that's was sort of our, our thought on, or I know Councilman Cobb's thought on, uh, allowing, uh, this comment period that we leave them open and uh, certainly any county council member would share the comments with you. If you wanna read them, it's not a problem. Um, so, uh, that's sort of, we think is, is giving us enough time. But really, you know, when you go in and vote, you vote. You don't, you don't comment. You just yes or no. Are you gonna do this? Yes or no? And, uh, unfortunately, uh, you know, we're kind of stuck in a situation where we've gotta move on this because those kids are coming in August. They're gonna be here, whether we like it or not. Further, uh, discussion. Uh, Mr. Jonas was here.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to state that I absolutely support the bonding, uh, of this money out to, uh, address these infrastructure issues. I agree that it is unfortunate the voters will not have the opportunity to vote on this bond themselves. And that's only because of the pandemic. And in the best interest of public safety, I support the City Council taking this course of action. And I believe based on constituent feedback, while I was campaigning this past election cycle, the voters would pass this in a referendum if they had the opportunity to. And because of that, I will be voting yes to approve and passes bond that will address the infrastructure and school issues. Uh, also, I don't know if I'm, uh, doing this appropriately, and I know it would be difficult with the virtual meeting, but I would like to ask for a roll call vote.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do a roll call vote. Mr. Jonas was here.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you for your comments. Further discussion.
I have a question, Your Honor.
Uh, Mr. Shinise, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a more of a procedural question. I mean, 'cause I, again, I, I'm also in favor of the ordinances as well. Um, but if it passes this evening, will that allow the public works to start the paving process as ordering supplies? Or there, is there a grace period that we still have to wait for, for, for we can act on the actual ordinance itself? Do we have to wait that thirty days? Is that waived as well?
Oh, that's a good point. Uh, can it, let me just have Mr., uh, uh, Pinter opine on that.
Okay, yeah, the, yeah, the, uh, the ordinance will be effective upon your vote to adopt it. So there's no thirty-day waiting period for this.
Which means Antonio can start paving tomorrow?
It'll be in front of your house, uh, around six o'clock.
He, he, he might be able to start paving, but not with this money because it's not been borrowed yet.
But again, to follow up, the goal will be going out with anticipation notes, correct?
That's right.
Yes, that's our process, Mr. Shinise.
Okay, thank you.
And it's, as soon as he can gear up, he will be. Uh, further, uh, discussion.
Your Honor.
Yeah, Mr. Shin- Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, I think we're, we're definitely headed in the right direction. Um, and it's Mr. Tab- Tavernet, Tabersek noted, uh, the time limit for the, the public. I think we're giving him the ten days now, but as you said a little while ago, this, this has been in the papers and so on and so on and discussed at, at the council level. So there has been a lot of, uh, activity as to what, what the, uh, the whole deal is all about. Um, I think, again, that we are, we're doing a great job. There's been a lot of work behind the scenes, and, and I know there's gonna be a lot more work behind the scenes. And I intend to, uh, to vote yes on this tonight. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Visconti. Further, uh, discussion, council. Further discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Alves.
Thank you. Um, uh, along with my colleagues, I don't think you're gonna have hinder this passage.
Could you speak up just a little bit, Mr. Alves? It's hard to hear you.
I apologize. Is this better, everybody?
Yeah, it's good.
Okay, thank you. So a lot of my colleagues, I don't think you're gonna get any contention on the actual vote, uh, on tonight. I believe that a lot of us, it's a pro- procedural thing. And I'm glad there's a ten day comment here, but personally, I feel more comfortable with that, those ten day comments. Before a vote, I understand the public may have had ninety days. I understand this is um, we all know a lot of people go into the voting booth, we're gonna be reading that bond for the first time there. Um, and I just feel that, uh, for those who were aware, uh, they were under the impression they were gonna vote if they got the council agenda yesterday, they had a little over twenty-four hours to make a comment. Um, by, by no means is my intention or goal to delay this by any way. Um, I was just curious, does the timing allow for public comment and a special meeting before the June meeting? I think that would make a lot of us who have, uh, some concerns with the process and let the public participate in an easier manner, that would allow for that. Um, and I'm sure would feel a lot more comfortable if I placed a vote after hearing from the public, not a vote that'd be binding and then the public had to come.
Thank you, Mr. Alves. Further discussion. Further discussion. Um, I, I lost you. Where are you, Mr.? There you are, Mr. Salvatore. Okay, I got you.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, today I can honestly tell you that I know how I wish to vote on this agenda. Councilman Levy, it won't be abstained. Um, as a matter of fact, if the referendum had occurred on the twenty-eighth as originally scheduled, I would have walked into the booth and voted yes for both questions. But instead, our country, our state, our city is in the grips of a pandemic that many alive today have never faced in their lifetime. It has changed our way of living. It has even changed our way of governing as well. Today, we as twenty-one members of the City Council will vote for whatever portion of the forty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-four registered voters who would have spoken through their vote in the referendum. Before the pandemic, I had no doubt in my mind that my yes vote would be backed up by a majority of voters in the city. But today on May fifth, twenty twenty, I believe I know the will of the city's voters. But there's a seed of doubt in my mind. This stems from the fact that the pandemic has caused an economic crisis that leaves too many questions um, in the minds of us as elected officials, but more importantly, our constituents who are quarantined at home and are wondering how they're going to come out of this when things begin to return to normal. Voters have asked me via social media and emails how the approval of the bond will affect their taxes when the time comes to pay these general obligation bonds back. I can't answer them, and I believe that no one, um, here could probably answer that because you don't even know how much of the bond you're gonna need to use and to know how much is gonna be paid back. Um, Mr. Mayor, I heard your live at five. I love your lives at five, but I have to look at them after the fact. But I saw that on Monday, you actually announced that we would be voting to approve or reject the bond issue. Um, and you had stated, because the City Council and myself want your voice to be heard, we're going to ask you to submit comments if you want for ten days. And then it was stated that then the comments could be taken under consideration if the City Council wanted to. Um, and you said that you wanna make them feel like they're part of the pressure, the, uh, process and make sure that there was transparency. Listen, I know the enormity of this pandemic and the fact that it's thrown every aspect of our lives into chaos. But what were our constituents think about the fact that we're gonna vote first and take their comments second? What would be wrong in allowing a ten-day comment period to start tomorrow and go through the sixteenth? And then call us back for a special meeting on the nineteenth after reviewing the comments? I have no doubt that the bond is gonna pass, but I just asked the question, is it right to put the cart before the horse? And us vote and then allow them to comment? And what if, God forbid, they came back and said they didn't agree with this? So that, I, I guess my question to you is, I heard you say earlier on that June second may have been okay. But what would be wrong about putting a ten-day period before and then have us vote on a special meeting twelve, thirteen days from now?
Well, uh, yeah, first of all, just so we're clear, um, I just wanna make sure I encapsulate your comments correctly, so I understand what you're asking. Um, we had multiple public hearings, multiple opportunities for people to opine on this from, starting from January till now. However, I think your comment is more in, in the, um, within the context now of COVID-19. In other words, that, that somehow that you did, that somebody's, somebody's bird, that somebody, that somebody may change their opinion based on the, um, uh, you know, the pandemic and so forth. So, um, I think that, um, you know, June second would have been a very, very difficult date for us. We were on the phone yesterday with the school facilities unit. They wanna know that we've got the authority to do this before they'll do any plan. Um, they are not working at full, uh, tilt, but in the interest of trying to, uh, give the public an opportunity to opine on this, uh, we said at the very outset, we might be able to live with that. At this point, after our conversations over the last several days with SFU and with some other folks up, up at the Capitol, they want this information now. They want it as soon as we can get it. They don't wanna wait, and they're afraid that, given the fact that they're on a reduced work week as well and a whole bunch of things going on there, that they won't necessarily be able to, uh, uh, review our material and we potentially could miss a very important date. The other issue is the timeliness of paving and the fact that, you know, we, we step back until David goes out and gets the money for us to really do, we lose several months on the paving. So, uh, while I understand where you're coming from and I respect it, um, look, everybody's gotta make their own decision. Uh, I get it. Um, but, uh, at the end of the day, uh, those kids are showing up here in August and, and we've gotta be ready. I mean, there's just, it's not a if, it's not a maybe. Otherwise, we have overcrowded schools and all kinds of other issues. So I appreciate your, your thoughts. I didn't know if Mr. Ayderola wanted to uh, just chip in on that a little bit.
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, I, I think, um, you, you covered it. Um, I, I think I counted, I was at twelve separate meetings, uh, discussing the school projects. Uh, we met with, uh, PTO people, we met with, uh, we had public hearings. Um, we, we laid out the best plan that we can. Uh, we've communicated that plan with the state. Uh, we realized that the final plan may tweak a little bit based on these projections as they develop over the next couple of years, but, um, it's time to move ahead. Um, to sit back and, and hope that something different will, will, uh, occur, uh, you know, could be problematic. And what I'm finding just in my work, and maybe somebody, uh, can, can kind of, uh, uh, support this also is it seems like we're working our tail off, but we're getting so much less work done, and it's because we're just so less inefficient. And the concern here, uh, just like with the Board of Education, I mean, I love those guys, they're my partners, but uh, we've been pushing them to get us some documents, um, because we know they're facing the same issue we're facing. Um, it's hard to do this stuff when you can't meet and you can't sit down and have these, uh, constructive conversations. So as we start emailing documents back and forth to each other, try to review them, um, it doesn't really replace that face-to-face contact that, uh, would make us so much more effective. So, uh, uh, I think we, we try to buy as much time as we can to make the submittal. We put the best package together we can to secure these monies. These monies are, uh, so important to us and these reimbursements. I mean, our rates are pretty high. We can't miss out on getting this money. Thank you.
Just a follow-up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You did paraphrase pretty well. Um, it, it is, I'm not bringing back January or February here. I am bringing back COVID-19 and the fact that our city, our state, our government, and you guys know I work at a hospital. My hospital has said, never said no to any of the money going out, and I can only imagine what the bottom line is gonna look like a month or two from now when things hopefully start to return near normal. We don't even think it's gonna be normal. I'm just curious about the cart before the horse. And so ten days or maybe fifteen days at the most, even before that June second is still uh, too tight of a timeline. I just, I just wanna make sure I heard that correctly.
Uh, you heard what correctly?
That, I mean, even if, if we put the cart.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, yeah, 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 okay, I got, okay, yeah, so, look, June 2nd was absolute drop dead, can we get it done, I guess we could probably try to push it and rush it through, any little thing goes wrong on June 2nd, you're done, but we now have an opportunity to do this tonight and get going a month earlier on a lot of these projects, and we should take, you know, I believe we should take advantage of that opportunity and get this done, given a choice between having a vote and not having a vote, of course, I'm gonna defer to the vote, once the governor moved it out of June into August, there's no way, I mean, it's not gonna work for us, and so at this point, you all, all of us, including me, are, you know, we have to make sometimes these decisions that don't make us particularly happy, because we would rather have the public, you know, opine, but we have had, as Mr. Ayadrola has mentioned, a number of public hearings, public workshops prior, prior to COVID-19, the problem doesn't change though with COVID-19, it doesn't change, we still gonna have kids showing up in August that we're gonna need to find space for, we're still gonna have roads that need to be paved, we're gonna have bridges that need to be, be, to be replaced, that doesn't change, so, you know, I think that this is probably the most prudent method, is it asking for comments after the actual vote, is that something wrong? No, I think you can always come back if there's an overwhelming, you know, theme that we see through there, and I'm gonna point the committee of you all to review the comments, and it's something we can come back and look at in June, and say, hey, listen, folks aren't necessarily or whatever, but this will give us the green light to get our paperwork together, to get our engineering on board, and to start doing the work that we need to, to do, so I get what you're saying in terms of the, you, you would love to hear, so would I, you know, what you're feeling now, folks, after COVID-19's happened for six weeks, because it's horrible out there, and it's one of the reasons why David and I are working so hard to bring that budget in without a mil rate increase, because we understand what people are going through, Mr. Levy, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Your Honor, you know, we, I hear a lot of talk about, well, can't we wait and put this off, also the comments about this is the biggest bond issue, it's, people have to remember, we approve without going to vote a $261 million budget every year, and we do it among the council itself, the legislative body, but we also have bonds that are being retired, and I wonder if, whether Director Saint-Hilaire could comment on the impact on our debt service and the budget as to how it would affect the taxpayers, considering we're retiring a lot of debt and we would probably go back into the market with the advantage of a low interest rate, I wonder if Davis King-Hilaire could comment on that.
Okay, Mr. Levy, Mr. Saint-Hilaire, please.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Levy, sir, I appreciate the ability to comment on that, we're gonna time it so that as bonds roll off, we'll issue bonds to about the same amount, and that minimizes the impact in general, and then, of course, the bonds that were rolling off, chances are, were at a higher interest rate than the ones that we're gonna be issuing, so, you know, at the end of the day, we'll be issuing and paying less of a interest cost, have less, lower interest cost, we're also looking at opportunities for refunding, as you know, we're, we're going out on refunding on two, two phases, first phase is next week, we, which we hope we'll, we'll be able to execute if the market is right, and the next phase is probably in the springtime, so again, if the market is right, and we do that as these bonds are callable, and, you know, and that makes them, again, not taxable, we can also call them when, and issue taxable bonds, but we chose not to do that, but to, to the point of, that was mentioned earlier regarding some certainty, and I know Antonio expresses, he didn't say the term, but I, I will express it, because we're all sensing this on our, our regular daily calls that we have with each other, is we're looking for some sense of certainty among a uncertain world here, and, you know, we, we've offered deferrals, and, and that's taken, that's really putting some pressure on our cash flow, and what that does in turn is it's, I, I have to tell Antonio, you have to wait until we have some certainty, Antonio, you know, because the, the PW grant, which is a grant that the state says, all right, you know, you can use this for roads, but guess what, we're not gonna give it to you until June 30th of this year, so they tell us that July 1st, but we don't get it until June 30th, so we have to wait for the entire year, we can't touch it, because at any point during that year, the state could say, guess what, you ain't gonna get it, that's happened to us several times in the past, and you all know it, if you've been on the council for any more than one term, so I just have to, you know, say to you that what concerns us right now, my biggest concern is cash flow and to make sure that we can meet our cash flow, and right now, my projections are looking pretty good, but if we start going out with projects, usually we front the projects at this point in the year, so we can tell Antonio, okay, go ahead and start planning, I can front you for a couple million here, and, you know, to get the things rolling, because I already have bond authorization, and, you know, and we're gonna be going out in our July, you know, typical bond time of the year is when we go out in July, but right now, I'm running out of bond authorization, you know, I'm going out in July for about 12 million, but that's on the old stuff, that stuff we've already done, so the problem is, I don't have any, I have very little left of new stuff to, to go out for, and that means Antonio doesn't have much to, to, you know, that he can go out and commit to, and, but that's, that's what our concern is, you know, for the folks on the board, and, and that's what the, the sense of urgency, not just the deadline with the state, but we have bridges that have to be done, we have roads that have to be done, we have sidewalks, these are all projects that are typical in any CIP that we present to you, every year, we're just grouping them all together and saying, this gives us the ability to issue as we see fit, and, and, you know, we're not just confining ourselves to 1 million or 2 million, but we can do these and get a better price for them as we do them.
Thank you, Mr. Saint-Hilaire, Mr. Levy, you still have the floor?
I wonder if I could continue a little bit here?
Yes, sir.
Because when we look at this, I don't think anybody's in denial that we've had three months to study the content of this bond issue, and the public generally has had an opportunity to review it as well, nobody has pointed out any inappropriate expenses in this bond issue, and the public and certainly the governor in, in enabling us to move forward on this, recognize the emergency that was at hand here to move forward on, on the school projects and, or, and as well move forward on the infrastructure of the city of Danbury, all things taken in consideration with interest rates as, as low as they are right now, and the opportunities, the impact on the community itself, I, I will support this strongly and I encourage everybody else to do it as well, there, and nobody has suggested any shortfalls in this bond issue, I know that some people would like to wait, but waiting, we might miss a, a season of construction, which would be very harmful, and I don't know what we'd do with the increased enrollment in the schools, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levy, Mr. Santos, I think you had your hand up, did you have the floor?
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor, I understand the, the points that are being made about not wanting to wait, I don't want to wait either, I plan on voting tonight the same way I would have voted at the ballot box on the 28th, but I, I do have, I mean, I am concerned with the fact that we were okay with the June 2nd date, but we're not now, and I get that we want to give an open timeframe there, a grace period of sorts for people to opine on it, and having people's opinion is important, like you said, Your Honor, but it does feel like we're doing it a little bit backwards, we're voting today and then we're giving them 10 days, and I get it, we're gonna create a committee, commission that will study the results of the, of whatever opinions the, the voters have, I, I can tell you that people have reached out through social media, through email, and, and there's varied questions, right, they, they're worried about what Councilman Salvatore has said about the impact of COVID-19 on, on, on this now, and, and we do think that there would be an impact, you know, an impact of what the unemployment rate is going to have on, on their own personal lives and does, is there a burden that they're going to have to take as far as taxes when, in the future, I will vote tonight, like I said, like I planned on voting at the ballot box, which is I will support this bond, because as has been said, we do need it for our roads, we need it for our schools, I just feel like we're, we're doing things a little bit backwards, we're given the opportunity to, to speak after the vote, it just, it doesn't make too much sense to me, I appreciate the opportunity for the public to speak, I, I just think we should have done it back the right way, and I don't think that 10 days is gonna make that much of a difference, I, I definitely am against pushing this off any further than that, I, I understand the seasonality of paving and the students that are coming in the new school year, but I do think that having the opportunity to listen to the voters, reaching out to them in different ways, because, you know, we are in a different time where people are, may not be reading the paper every day, where people may be getting their information in different sources, so making sure that we're getting this information in front of them in varied ways gives them an opportunity to opine, and then we can make our decision, I have no doubt that it's gonna pass tonight, I plan on voting for it, but I just wanted to make my comments public, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Santos, further comments? Okay, seeing none then, at this time, we'll call the roll, I'm gonna do the roll call, if that's okay, because I don't vote, and I may circle back and ask you for, for some clarity, so, or you just, if I don't hear you, because it's a technology, so, we'll start with the A's, Councilman Als.
Aye.
Councilman Bizet.
Yes.
Councilman Mike Esposito.
Yes.
Councilman Levy.
Yes.
Councilman Salvatore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stanley.
Yes.
Councilman Tabersek.
Yes.
Councilman Fox.
Yes.
Councilman Priola.
Yes.
Councilman DeGilio.
Yes.
Councilman Cabo.
Yes.
Councilman Rotello.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Visconti.
Yes.
Councilman Palma.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Knapp.
Yes.
Councilman John Esposito.
Yes.
Councilman Santos.
Aye.
Councilman Perkins.
Yes.
Councilman Shinisi.
Yes.
Councilwoman Camissa. And Councilman Malinaro.
Yes.
Okay, there'd be 21 aye and zero in the negative.